So we've got a... Should we, should we, right? Jump out?
Motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Second, second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Oh, is that all? Need any opposition? We need to empty the room?
I got it.
Very well outside.
Yeah, there is.
Very sensible.
Step down.
Thanks, Emily.
So Jeff hasn't joined us yet. Jeff is Jeff...
I know.
I'm gonna screw up his last name. Pian, Piano. He's from Drummond Woodson. He's going to discuss with us tonight the two letters in front of you. One from the attorney representing box modular. And then there's your response from Woodson. And I wanted you to see the correspondence back and forth. So when Jeff joins us via Zoom, we're going to, I'm gonna let him talk, and then we're going to discuss next steps on how the board would like to proceed with the modular. So that's really what we're talking about.
So as a reminder for everyone, because not everyone was, was here at the time, we have a modular... We actually have two modulas over at the Princeton Randolph School. One we own, the other one that we have been leasing since we closed TC Hamlin. And so we, Andrea engaged in conversations with Skiyavi, who constructed that unit and thought we had an agreement to buy it. And as we were preparing, we'd come to the board, gotten permission, we were moving forward with it. And then they said, oh no, our policy changed, and now the price was almost double. So our attorney advised that we just send a check to them for the amount that we agreed upon, right? And to see what would happen. And they have not cashed it, right? And they're, they're not going to cash it. So the point of this conversation is to now for you to decide how you want to proceed. And so the attorney will be here to give you some guidance.
So in this conversation, there are two players that we have dealt with, that I have dealt with. There are the couriers. There's Jen and David Courier. David Courier is the one...
Can you put on for one second?
Okay, so we're back. We're back on, so people want to...
So I would make a motion to authorize the business manager to work with council to explore an evaluation of the property.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Okie doke. Motion carries. Okay, so we're ready to begin?
Probably. I'm sure she's saying. Something just came in.
Yeah.
I've already said it. Michelle's gonna scream.
Well, she can scream.
But they're not allowed even that many.
Well.
Sign you know.
Yeah.
On 10. Now you have to twice. Can I not show?
She did too.
If you don't flag, I'll touch your head. Listen. Just one seat.
It's right there.
Oh, boy. Want to go down there? Yeah, want to go up? Let's go. Yeah. So you're on me, so I can't hear. I can't hear.
24 here. Activities.
Okay. We also have.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
Connor. Connor. Your spot. Right there.
There they are.
Yeah.
My prime.
You see, you're here.
Yeah. Denied.
So, yeah, that's right.
For Alex. Like. Your state. The big senior lady. And then. Why should I should leave the property? Here's right now. Okay. You find her? Yes. Yes. You made this really. The wall. I mean. Sorry. Sorry. No, I'm just. She's a special. And having that. Because I see like. I really wish. She would love. You are able to be there for me. See. No. Oh, I didn't. She does. Like, make it long. I know. We need to. I don't hear anything. I can say. Something. You really want to go to the beach. That's one of the things. So I am so let's. Some things like. I don't even care what. I can take. Like you want. Pretty much. So if you want to go during the week. I like to. And I live online. Yeah, we like to go to literature. Oh, wow. My turn. We do. Here's here. And like if we're going to go to the beach, like they want to have. Oh, God. They're here and they have the showers. Like. Yeah. Yeah. Definitely.
Evening. Welcome to our June 5th school board meeting, last one of the year. Thank you for your patience while we conducted our executive session. Not typical that we have them at the beginning. It's usually at the end, but we'll also have several at the end. So don't lose heart. Let's see. We will begin with introduction of board members, starting over here with.
Jeff Henley.
Jenna McKinnon.
Molly Routers.
Sage Scully.
Linda Caputo.
Alyssa Tracy.
Becky Fless.
Tony Beat.
Megan Carlson.
Kira Poshit.
Joanna Bryant.
Mary Benny.
Shawna Tucker.
Administrative staff.
Beth Hopkins, superintendent.
Tiffany Akrol, principal at Pittston Randolph Consolidated School.
Sarah Sims, principal at Gardner Regional Middle School.
Angela Hardy, director of curriculum.
Sarah Gold, director of special services.
We can do anything. What if it's? Sorry. You can use school.
Or an Irelle, principal at Gardner High School.
Carol, you can tell of Laura Richards School.
Excellent.
Helen Thompson School.
Andrea Lake, business manager.
And I'm Terry McGuire, director of technology.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Stand for the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, please. Has everyone signed up that wanted to sign up? Toni Pide.
Good try.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Sorry. And I have to read a speech?
Yep.
But you can stay. Don't go. Doesn't count against your two minutes. Okay? Thank you. We're about to convene into public comment. State law in Maine requires public comment on a comment item on agendas of a full school board meeting. Please note that public comment is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about personnel or student matters, any rumors presented as fact that compromise the privacy of others, and any health or medical information protected as confidential. On any matter of concern, we ask that you go through the appropriate administrative channels. We ask that speakers please address the comments to the board directly rather than to the audience. Speak. Speakers may address items pertinent to tonight's meeting agenda or any topic related to the school unit's programs, policies, or operations. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return order once it has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period. Let's see. Please review our board pamphlet. Welcome to our school board meeting that provides a policy, B E D H, which is our public policy at board meetings, policy. You've filled out the form and the board will now entertain public comments for 20 minutes. Each individual speaker is allotted two minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. You're the timer?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Toni P A. I live in Gardner. I have a recent high school graduate and a freshman at the high school. So I wasn't necessarily planning to speak tonight, so my thoughts are a little bit hastily put together, but I wanted to come and basically say thank you and to say that, you know, this has been a very successful school year for my child. And I was very nervous going into high school this year. You know, my son, he has autism and I was, you know, not sure how he's going to navigate high school at first, but he has just been doing amazingly. And it is in thanks to the incredible programs that we have at our high school. The interventional programs that we have, the co-taught, you know, programs that we have. He meets with his far wing counselor once a week, which has been amazing. And my husband and I actually met with her today to talk about sort of the next steps for him. And he has just like made incredible progress this year. And I just want to share that because I feel like it's an example of how these programs actually work. And it is setting him up for success, which is exactly why we are here. So thank you.
I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name again. I'll get it right. Third time's a charm. Jen Scully.
Hi, my name is Jen Scully and I live in Pittston. And this will be the last time I can say I have two children attending MSAD 11 as my oldest is graduating in just two weeks. And as I reflect on the past 14 years, I'm overwhelmed with gratitude for the incredible teachers, staff, and administrators who have shaped my children's lives. Their dedication, compassion, and creativity have left a lasting mark on our family. I think of Mrs. Adams, who turned a science lesson into a hands-on hydroponic gardening project. I think of Mrs. Leiselbe, who in the earliest days of the pandemic, before Google Classroom was the norm, made sure families could navigate online learning. I thank Rick the custodian, who handed out stuffed animals to students as thanks for lending a hand. I think of Ms. Williams, who had spent hours online with my daughter when she was quarantined in the basement. I think of Ms. Baggis, who knew my daughter so well, she made sure that I got the exact color and model of water bottle that she wanted for Christmas. And I think of Ms. Soto, who has been both a shoulder to cry on and a mentor, inspiring students to give back to the community. These are just a few of the many remarkable people who make MSAD 11 what it is. A place where students are truly seen, supported, and cared for. And yet there are those outside groups and even some sitting on this board who would have believe that the public would have the public believe otherwise. That our schools are failing, our educators are here to indoctrinate or groom children, that school-based health centers are something unfair. But I want to make it clear. The community sees through that noise. We know how hard our educators work. We know they come to school every day with one goal. To support the academic, emotional, and social growth of our children. To every teacher, staff member, and administrator who has supported my family, thank you. You have helped raise confident, compassionate, capable young people, and I am so grateful.
Victoria Tracy.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Tracy. I live in Randolph and I'm currently a sophomore at Gardner Area High School. Due to ongoing online campaigns that have continuously mentioned my name and claim to know who I am, I felt it was my duty to speak tonight. I'm a 15-year-old girl who is a part of many clubs, activities, and other leadership roles to help me make a difference in the community. I am not anyone's political pawn. I speak for myself. My feelings about certain taboo topics have not been swayed by outside sources. They have come from seeing what those around me endure. I am not here tonight to promote the continued division. I am here to express a need for unity. Everyone, no matter age, race, sexuality, gender identity, or political standings, has a right to their own opinions. But what needs to stop is the constant arguing and belittling that has been ongoing between board members and those of the community and even outside sources trying to paint the community of Gardner as something to be ashamed of. Agreeing to disagree, although not the most powerful decision, can augment relationships between the board and our community. Showing unity is not a sign of weakness. It's a sign of leadership. The school board is supposed to take care of myself and every other student in MSAD 11. Board members' jobs cannot be adequately fulfilled if board division and community division continues. Thank you for your time and thank you to those on the board who have made it their mission to make me feel safe, seen, and heard.
Alvin Liu.
I'm actually Alvin's aide. I'm going to be helping him up here a little bit.
I'm sorry, what?
He's not not Alvin.
That's even. Do you live in Gardner?
Yes. Yeah. But I'm helping. So I have a message from Alvin.
No, we don't put your actual name.
Okay, so if someone is disabled or in a situation, they can't come here and have not waited.
He's mentally disabled. But that's about it.
I just want to know that your policy.
He's not disabled.
If someone's in a disabled.
He's not disabled.
If someone's in a disabled situation, they are forced to come by.
What?
No, I didn't.
He can write a message, as I said.
Okay, I just want to know that's your policy. So if someone's in that situation. We just need to have that.
Why didn't he just put his own name?
Why didn't you just put your own name? If you live in Gardner, why didn't you just put your name?
Well, I'm not speaking. He is.
No, that's.
Yeah, so he's actually on the phone right now. He's going to speak. He's just in a situation where he can't.
This Alvin Liu.
Yeah.
He does not live in Gardner. We have enough messages from him that he's from Indiana. That's.
I just need to have you on record say that, no, he can't speak right now.
Correct.
Okay.
You heard what he said at the beginning, right?
Okay, so I get your position, he cannot speak.
As a non-resident is not able to speak right now.
How it works is our residents get to speak first, our-
You get their messages, I've seen them, I've watched a lot of it.
Hang on, you're not listening. Hang on. Residents get to speak first.
Okay.
Employees then get to speak.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Then people who do not live in our community get to speak.
So can we put him at the bottom?
If there's time.
Okay, so, okay, so I'll just keep him on hold until the bottom?
If, if there's twenty minutes.
This is the question, I'm asking you.
Clearly, you're gonna go over twenty minutes if we have more than ten people.
No, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. You need to stop. We're having a conversation.
Yeah.
The policy reads, and there is a copy of the policy where you enter, and the board's policy is for twenty minutes and everyone gets two minutes.
Okay, so that's not the question.
If the board, if the board agrees to extend time to allow others, um, to speak, they may do so.
So in his state, he's, it's okay?
But the policy is real, the policy is very clear that it starts with residents.
We're talking about, we're talking about, can he speak if there's time?
It starts with residents, he may not.
Then why are you trying to go the twenty minutes?
Right now, we have twelve minutes left.
It is with residents first.
Yeah.
Then, as Mrs. Fless said, it is with staff members. And if there is time remaining, then it is with non-residents.
Then he can speak? And, but he can speak through the phone at that point?
If they're on the list, if they're on the list.
Okay, so if there is time at the end, he can speak in that.
If he's on the list, and he's the next one in line.
He's on the list?
If there is time.
Okay, thank you.
But he does not live in Gardner, right?
All right, I would say let's move on to the next one.
Hey, turn around.
Please, yeah, out of here.
Quit, tell them to quit talking behind me, I can't listen.
You don't intend.
I'm sorry.
They are being extremely distracting. If we're gonna run this thing like a circus, tell them to stop it now.
Members of-
You're talking like-
Can't you?
Please. All right, next person.
Madam Chair, I didn't stop the clock. We have eleven minutes left.
Okay? Great. Jennifer Richardson.
Jennifer Richardson from Gardner, and there are two things I want to speak about tonight. First, I'd like to talk about school choice, or some of you have heard the voucher system. As always, I urge you to find the facts and not just listen to YouTube or follow social media rumor. I taught for ten years in a state that has school choice. If the school I taught in had an opening, applications from students outside of our system would be accepted. If a student from outside of the system was selected to attend our school, their tuition was paid by the sending district. Did our school choose students that needed academic support? No. Did our school choose students that needed medical support? No. Did our school choose students that needed behavioral support? No. What was the benefit? Lots of money, technology, educators, which included very small class sizes, were provided in the school I taught. Someone with a wealth or influence could purchase a home in a town with lower taxes and benefit from our school while removing funds from the sending school district. You're all set if you have money, influence, or a student with impeccable test scores. If not, your child won't have the same options. Secondly, over the summer, um, I'll be asking our state legislature to require some basic requirements of the school board that all participants in our school board are required to follow. Fingerprinting. If you can't drive a bus in this district without being fi- fingerprinted, if you're a trusted member of the school board, you should be fingerprinted. Um, and like students who have an unexcused absence before school activity, board members who miss a meeting prior to, that's unexcused, should not be able to vote at the following meeting.
Yidok, uh, Eric O'Side.
Good evening, my name is Ariel Sides, I am now in Randolph. I want to start by thanking both Pat Hopkins and Sage Scully for their time, commitment, and dedications to both students, staff, and the community over the past year. Serving on the school board is no small task and your efforts have not gone unnoticed. Your leadership has been critical during a time of cha- of complex challenges and very spirited discussion. I also want to express my strong support for the establishment of a school-based health center. Giving students access to physical and mental health resources directly within the school system is not only practical, it's essential, and it removes barriers to care that our community experiences at a higher rate and gives our children the support they need to thrive. At the same time, I'd also like to raise some concerns about a proposed no-cell phone policy. This past year alone, our schools have faced numerous threats, each one a reminder of how vital and quick communication is between students and their families. Uh, cell phones are a part of the world our children are growing up in, and rather than banning them outright, we should be teaching students how to use them responsibly and ethically. These devices can be powerful tools for learning, safety, and for connection. Integrating them thoughtfully into our school life prepares students for the world that they are already living in. Thank you again to Pat and Sage and to all of you who continue to work and support and make our schools stronger, safer, more supportive, and inclusive of every student.
Emma.
Good evening, my name is Emma Doxie and I'm from Pittston. And, uh, for the unsure elderly gentleman who fought hard and traveled far to be here tonight, the spelling on that is D O X S E E. Um, I just want to begin by sincerely thanking, uh, this year's previous and new school board members who have worked tirelessly this year for our kids, our families, our community. Your time, effort, and commitment to making decisions that support all kids do not go unnoticed. Also want to thank the parents and neighbors who continue to show up, not just for their own child, but for everyone's. But tonight, I'd like to shift your attention not to this board, but to a different kind of presence that's made its way into our district. Three gentlemen of bottom sniffing, Timmy Sarbinus, Louis Bodnar, and Alan Alvin. This lover trio is not from here.
Stop, that's disparaging comments. Shut that down, she's talking to me, not you.
I'm sorry.
It's not okay.
We're going to recess if this doesn't stop.
Oh, we're gonna run away.
Where do we go?
No, we're going to recess if this doesn't stop. They have their free speech and they have a right to speak.
Tell her to stop.
And they have a right to speak.
Tell her to stop the disparaging remarks against me.
Stop, stop it. Um, officer, I know, what?
No.
Can you please?
She's the boss, it's going. You gotta go.
You're wrong, all of you, shame on you. Giving shame on you for shutting down free speech. Screw you all.
Welcome to the dorm, you're not moving in.
Okay.
Please, please, everyone. You're not excused.
I won't mention any names going forward. Um, they do not live here, yet they position themselves as loud voices in our community, spreading hate, sharing disgusting and predatory remarks about our students and the adults who support them. They don't know our kids, but they've made it their mission to shape the tone of our conversations, often using divisive language, online harassment, and imitating, intimidating tactics aimed at families, educators, and board participants. Let's be clear, this is our district, our schools. While differing opinions will always exist, what shouldn't have a place here is manufactured outrage and targeted exclusion. And especially when it's coming from people who have no stake in our kids' wellbeing. Their influence is not just disruptive, it's dangerous. And when that influence spills into our decision-making or public discourse, it begins to erode the very sense of safety and unity that our schools should foster. I urge this board, take a moment to reevaluate the policies and norms that have allowed such outside interference to take root. Our focus must return to our community, who is committed to supporting our schools day in and day out. Let's protect our students by centering the voices within this community and this di- district. Thank you and have a wonderful summer, except for the three students of a bear embarrassed.
Tom Harnett.
Evening, my name is Tom Harnett, I live in Gardner. Lived here for thirty-three years, paid my taxes for thirty-three years to the city of Gardner and this school district. And those taxes I pay happily every year. And I thank you because we put two of our children, Jo and Eloise, through this school district, and they are thriving. And I want to stay positive tonight, but I do have to point out that I have been extremely distressed as a resident and taxpayer of Gardner to see so many people without a connection to this district at all using you and our students as political pawns and footballs. I'm not gonna name names, but I am saying it is inappropriate to come into a community to which you have no connection and disparage our school board, our teachers, and our students, and I find that unacceptable, but I want to be positive. And I want to talk about a couple of good things that have happened in the last couple of months. On April twelfth, I went to the Concert for Hope, put on by the Civil Rights Team Project, um, with Christina Benedict, who's been running that program for many years, and I was proud to establish that program. And you had students and teachers, faculty, support staff, making it clear that the policy in MSAD eleven is that every single student feels safe, valued, welcomed, and respected without exception. And I applaud them for taking time out of their, their Saturday night to come and perform in the, in the theater, the little theater, and stand up for the very students who are being targeted by voices of hate from outside of this district, and I want to thank them. I also want to thank our superintendent, who is leaving after an incredible career leading MSAD eleven. You've done it with professionalism, with compassion, you've weathered some incredible storms, and you've weathered an environment where public service is very difficult. And lastly, I want to thank our student member, Sage Scully, and other students who have performed this role. Please do not let the attacks on you dissuade you from continuing in public service. Thank you very much.
Matthew Lillybridge.
This is the end of twenty minutes when this is over, Madam Chair.
Hi, Matthew Lillybridge.
Hi.
Nice to see you.
Sorry, I used to be on the time crunch. I'm Lillybridge, West Gardner. First off, I want to thank the Saint Pat Hopkins, our superintendent, for her tireless dedication for all the kids of this district for over a decade. These last five years have been pretty brutal, but you're, you have earned a well-deserved retirement, and I wish you nothing but the best, and I'll see you around town. I also want to thank all of the other outgoing administration who are now in the overflow room. No one can imagine the daily sacrifice that those who lead our kids do on a day-to-day basis. Everything far beyond education, social work, and all the other things that they do, and I want to make sure that they are recognized as well. And I also want to wish good luck to Katie Gould, who's getting ready to take over the reins in the middle of these tumultuous times. I met Katie when I moved here in twenty seventeen, and I couldn't be happier that you're gonna be the new superintendent. Now, to address all the nonsense, if you don't live in this district, if you don't vote in this district, and if you don't pay taxes in this district, then you shouldn't speak at our district meetings. You should not waste the time of the school board with your verulent words. Stick to the internet, where you can spread half-truths, exaggerations, and sometimes lies. Don't tell parents what to think about a place you don't live. Don't tell parents what should happen in a public school when some of you said, don't send your kids to private school. Don't tell members of this district what the mob thinks, the ignorant, and the hypocrites. I know you're gonna talk about freedom of speech. I know about freedom of speech, and I fought for it for over twenty years. I deployed the combat three times to defend, to defend against bullies. So I'll say with my words, you're not welcome in our district. The school-based health center is for all the kids. If you're against it, tell your kids not to go. It's as simple as that. Health is dying in this country. Let's guarantee something for the most vulnerable. Stop enforcing your beliefs on others. They have a voice too, but they probably work in two or three jobs to make ends meet, so they can't be here. So I'll be here to speak for them, for all the kids. Thanks.
Chair, I move to extend public comment by twenty minutes to accommodate who are balsed on the list, please.
Is there a second?
A second, then.
All those in favor of extending twenty minutes? Okay, just a second. All right, those opposed?
Was that the end of the residents?
That was the end of the.
No, no, I'm a resident, you didn't get to.
All right, so that fails. Um, six thousand eight hundred and six to four thousand five hundred and eight.
Point of order, you're not allowed to approach the desk.
Uh, no, Alan, no, no. Alan.
Disruption of our meeting.
No, is, cause, what was happening here? No. So, Mr. Sarbinus, will you please leave? No.
I am.
Um, immediately, please. We have asked, we have asked those papers back as well. Your behavior is bizarre. Can somebody step out and grab officers? Alonso, we gotta have one.
This is what it looks like when they protest too.
Yeah.
So just, just a comment, Madam Chair. Um, every other time in the past six months, we've extended, but this time, because people are saying things maybe the board doesn't like, we don't vote to extend, it's pretty hypocritical.
We voted.
Yes, it is.
We actually voted, that's actually.
Okay, so we need to. He literally voted. We voted, absolutely.
But it's, but tradition has shown over the past six months that we do extend to allow everybody to speak. So, oh, votes are not right, but if all of you were so inclusive, shouldn't we?
Point of order, Michelle, we have recessed. You can go.
I'm a duly elected member.
Well, then you need to follow the same rules as everyone else. Okay, it's just time to move on. Time to move on. Apologies to those who did not get to speak. Okay, um.
Madam Chair, point of order, we have rumblings in the galley.
Do we need to empty the room? Or just a recess? Let's recess, please, Terry.
Just five minutes to recess. Camera stays on, just the audio is off.
Just the audio is off. We can get through this. This is supposed to be a happy meeting.
Yes, of course. I believe under the rules that the audience is forbidden to cheer, adieu, or applaud during these meetings. And maybe we should look into that rule and enforce it. That's my understanding, is that when someone speaks, there should be no response from the audience. You wouldn't allow them to cheer or to adieu or applaud. So I think that's something we need to enforce here in these meetings.
Do we have a policy around that? You do not, but that is certainly something that you... We can surely... That's absolutely fine with me. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
It takes time.
Thank you. I would fall to the same, no sign type of a scenario, maybe?
Yes, it's going to be, it'll be consistent. No applause, no props, no signs, no flags, no extras. Just do public comment, and that's the end.
I'm not talking about flags or posters or anything. I'm talking about response from the audience.
Understood.
They should remain silent.
Absolutely. But the superintendent's wish was that we would not have signs either, so we're going to have to have another conversation about that. But public comment is public comment, so that's intended to be spoken. So, thank you. Prioritization of items and alteration of the established agenda format sequence as needed. Yes, Joe?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and insert a discussion later in the evening concerning the Title IX language that we have. And it would respond around the ongoing language that the federal government is insisting we follow. And I ask that we allow that discussion to take place later this evening. And I'd like a second on that motion.
I second. Questions or comments?
Could we already amend our policy?
Our policies are amended. We have given them. We are absolutely 100% in compliance. Yes.
That true?
Yes.
We are not in compliance. The Title IX is understood and enforced, and you don't have to go very far to listen to the Attorney General of the United States speak about it. Actually, he pinned point in the State of Maine on this issue, that any facility that allows a boy to participate in a girl's sport is in violation of Title IX. And that includes all the girls, the areas that a girl might also be within. That would be locker rooms, showers, and other such things that are normally sex-separated. Title IX right now demands that. And because I'm worried, very worried about the district, if this finally comes to a head, which is going to, State of Maine isn't going to win this. We're looking at a serious money loss. I mean, we could lose upwards of $2.5 million. 1.3, I think, in direct aid, and then another million and a half on the school lunch program. So this is a serious issue here, and I think it needs further discussion. And that's why I'm asking it to be added to the agenda. Thank you.
If I may. And just to clarify, that we did review the Title IX policies recently in accordance with recommendations from our attorneys, from counsel, based on updates to, frankly, the executive orders of the current administration. So we're in compliance with those Title IX orders from 2020. So, and we had reviewed those and updated those fairly recently, and then we went back and did it again to be planned. And just to clarify for the funding, my understanding is that the amounts that we're talking about, it comes to the whole state. So the decisions of one school district are not, don't really sway anyone. It's not like funds that are coming to this district specifically. It comes as a block essentially to the State of Maine to be administered by, to the districts.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, the Title IX under the Executive Order 14201, February 5th of this year, is titled Keeping Men Out of Women's Sports. And that is very clearly written, and the Executive Order has the force of law when you finally get into a court, because the executive branch has the authority to guide policy that falls under the executive umbrella. It's true, we could go on and on for a year and a half and end up before the Supreme Court.
Point of order, can we vote on the motion on the floor? Sure.
That true, yeah.
Can I ask for the motion to be amended to be considered at the Policy Committee rather than this full-board agenda placed on the Policy Committee again for this conversation or special meeting?
That would be...
Let's stick with the motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of opening up a discussion later in the meeting? Three? Yes, I have three. So all of those opposed? All opposed? So that fails 3,359 to 9,104. Prioritization of items and...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Another motion, if I may. Again, to amend the agenda to allow introduction to language for procuring another legal opinion to help guide us in these times. So I'd like a second on that.
So are you suggesting that we no longer do business with Drummond and Woodson?
I'm suggesting we get a second opinion because there's a really serious issue involved here. Under Title IX is what is called the Private Right to Action. And that allows a single person, a child, you know, a girl or a boy, a janitor, you know, a coach, to file a lawsuit directly against the school board or the main principals association. And you don't have to wait for any other action taken by any other agency. That person, if they feel they've been wronged in some way through the policy that we have adopted, could put us at great financial risk. So I ask a second opinion to reach out to a different agent, a different legal law firm, and ask us another, just an opinion on guidance on how we should be looking at this in view of just that one item. There are other items as well.
So hang on, Sage, we have a motion.
And just for clarification, you said it's on this one topic of Title IX? That's your motion?
No, it's, yeah, Title IX...
It's just specific to Title IX?
Title IX, yes, that's correct.
But you also said there's other issues.
Well, I mean, within...
Are you hoping to get in the door so that we'll start consulting and...
No, it's just on the Title IX. I'm sorry.
That's it.
Any issues that are within the Title IX.
Okay, thank you. Michelle seconded it. Questions or comments? All those, yes, Sage, sorry.
So I just have a question. If we are so concerned about the financial burden that this could perhaps place, how much would getting a second opinion cost our district? And I just don't know if we are necessarily in the position to be spending any extra money that we just don't have. So that's all I'd like to ask.
Michelle?
To address what Tony said earlier as related to this motion, I understand that we have sought counsel from Drummond and Woodson, and that they have advised that we are in compliance. However, there is another law firm that is out there saying that, no, that Drummond and Woodson's analysis is not correct. And so if we could potentially lose valuable funds for our students, if we want to take care of our students, we should get that second opinion to just make sure. The worst that can happen is they say, yep, you're all set, and then this goes away. Having a conversation is nothing bad. So I'm very much in favor of getting a second legal opinion. It can't harm anybody. It can only make us more educated.
We're asking about the pause.
But that wasn't the motion on the floor. There's no...
That was the question. Just a comment. I mean, anyone can sue us at any time, like they can sue anybody else. So we're living in a land of ifs. It's very uncertain for funding and for everything else. So I'll just say that. I don't need to take more time than we need on this. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of getting a second opinion? Those opposed? And the vote is the same as the previous, 3,359 to 9,104. Right. Prioritization of items and alteration of the established agenda format sequence as needed. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Molly. All those in favor? Movement of minutes of previous meetings. Regular school board meeting of May 1st, 2025, special school board meeting of May 13th, 2025, and meeting with elected officials on May 19th, 2025. Motion to approve, please. Second? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Recognition and celebrations. Have just a couple here. Just a few little ones. A few little things. Sage Scully, number one. Do bring the flowers this way. This is going to make the rest of the meeting much more pleasant. So, Sage, what an adventure it's been. It's been just so much fun working with you and watching you grow. I've never quite seen anyone as articulate as you about knowing your beliefs and being able to speak them peacefully, calmly, and not causing a stir. You're just a very mature young woman, and I am just so honored to have the pleasure of serving with you. And we have flowers for you. Sure. We'll watch the base, don't we? But don't give it away. Well, heads up. Here we go. Oh, man. Watch out. There we go. That's Karen Moody. Come on over here, Karen Moody. Oh, Tiffany's next? Well, I said Karen, so come, Karen. Yes, I just, yes, and I said you because the card was right there. There's your name. So I'd have to read about you. Karen Moody. Karen began her career in our district in 1997 as a Title I reading teacher at Helen Thompson School, a role she held for three years. She then transferred to Laura Richard School, where she spent the next five years teaching second grade. Karen's leadership journey took her to Rockland, where she served as an assistant elementary principal for two years. In a welcome return to our community, she became the principal of Laura Richard School, and a position she held with dedication and distinction for 18 years. Karen will retire in June of 2025, leaving behind a legacy of compassion, leadership, and unwavering commitment to students. And you were one of my children's teachers. Throughout her career, Karen has been known for her love for working with the littles, her creativity, her wonderful sense of humor. She has always demonstrated a genuine desire to support those around her. Karen uses her expertise to benefit both students and staff across the district. One of her significant early accomplishments in MSAD 11 was helping to develop the district-wide mastery and grading policy for pre-K to 12. She also played an important role in creating the parent compact and leading efforts that resulted in notable improvements in reading scores. Karen has generously shared her knowledge by teaching numerous staff development sessions and in-service workshops. Additionally, she became a certified Alice instructor. Sure did. We should have had you demonstrate that tonight. That would have been fun. Helping to improve school safety practices district-wide. Always committed to the well-being of students, Karen was instrumental in implementing the walking school bus program. Promoting student health and community engagement. Karen, as you head into, what did Bob call? Resignment. Resignment. All I could think of was resentment, but I knew that wasn't... Yeah, into that place. We can't thank you enough for everything that you've done for our schools, for our students, for our community. Your kindness, humor, and passion have made a lasting difference, and you will leave behind a legacy we'll always be proud of. Wishing you every happiness, relaxation, more grandbabies, more time to garden, more fun in everything you do. You've certainly earned it. Thank you. You're welcome. Tiffany. Front, stand there, lady. Oh, I remember when you came to us.
I was at LER, yes.
Okay, Tiffany started in in two thousand twenty six?
No.
That's not true.
Thousand and six.
But it says twenty six. You started in the future.
So that's amazing.
Tiffany started in two thousand six, teaching grade one at TC. TMI, no, TC Hamlin, two thousand seven to two thousand thirteen at LER, grade one, two thousand thirteen and fourteen at Gardner Regional Middle School, grade seven, BLA. You left MSAD eleven in two thousand fourteen and left the state. But you came back to LER from two thousand eighteen into two twenty one, where you stepped into the part-time school leadership role at Helen Thompson School and part-time instructional support person. Two twenty, two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five, you've been the building principal at Piston Randolph Consolidated School. And we appreciate you.
And now she is going back into the classroom.
I can't wait to hear, to hear how that goes, that's gonna be so fun, thank you. Okay. And we have Katie pulled.
But you better be careful because she's gonna be.
You know, our one employee soon. Katie. It's your turn. You've been our principal at Helen Thompson for eight years.
Nine.
Nine, for nine years. And you have excelled at that, so much so that you were an obvious choice when it came to leading the district forward, when it, when we knew that she was gonna go. So you made that part of our life very easy, and you've made Helen Thompson and all of these building issues a wonderful place to think about. And we appreciate you so much. I'm so happy that you've been with us for nine years, and I know that there are some board members who want to say something nice about you.
I've known Katie since my daughter was in kindergarten. You stop looking at me because I'm an emotional person, but. So she graduated fifth grade today. And this is Katie's last fifth grade celebration at Helen Thompson, but it was a beautiful, wonderful ceremony. And just so grateful that for you as principal and can't wait to sit on board with the others.
For having two kiddos, both, I just learned today that Andrew was in pre-K her first year as principal. I was, who was at the school prior to that, so my son was in one of her first classes in the school and her Addison Hall graduated. It was an emotional day. And just so fortunate, and both my kids were ecstatic to know that you weren't leaving the district and that you would still be around and actually maybe in more, a more accessible role now as they're moving through the other schools in the district. So thank you for all you've done and thank you for being willing to step up.
Maybe they'll want to come to board meetings.
Right?
Yeah, room that?
That room.
That big clip. All right, I know you're not gonna like this, Pat. But we have to do it.
I have a feeling I am not.
But it's okay to let people talk about you and be a little less professional for a minute. Their emotions get to you, it's okay. All right. Yeah. We'd like to talk about you.
Yeah.
Okay, done. We do have an agenda, however, we do have to celebrate you, and I intend for us to do that. I have something written, I don't know if others, anybody probably else does anything with me. It's coming, it's not wrong with you.
That would be fun.
Just the part that relates to you. Home for Katie. Katie. So I've written and rewritten this several times to get to this place, and I'm so grateful for Tony, for your listening and calming spirit. And hopefully this, well, this is the final iteration of this particular report. I've had the privilege of serving on this board for many years, I won't even say how many, but I can honestly say that the last fifteen years have been the most rewarding time of my life. As it has enabled me to grow into the public school advocate that I am and has offered the opportunity to be a part of this team of administrators, administrators and teachers and our superintendent that has pulled MSAD eleven to a level not before known. It has not been without its challenges and unforeseen hiccups, but the leadership, the attention to detail, knowledge of the law are but a few of the things that Pat has brought to our district. Regardless of the challengers, challenges, we've always been safe. And safe is one of the most important things that we can bring to this work, especially with children. Pat's demeanor and skill have proven to be exactly what we needed to bring us to this place. When I think back to the many initiatives we participated in from the TIFF grant that we loved so much, to Nate Levinson, to our strategic plan and community listening project. You've always been ready to help bring us to the next best place. For that, I am forever grateful. I'm grateful for your leadership, your honesty, your friendship, and those three things don't come along together often. And I and we've been lucky recipients of your time with us. So, Pat, it's bittersweet, but it is time for you to go and have an amazing retirement and enjoy your babies with your not-so-new slash old husband.
Oh, he's gonna love that.
Hope he's watching. And all the things that bring you joy. And I want to thank you so much for all that you've done for us, for me, the support and the growth that you've given and helped me with and helped our district to accomplish.
Thank you. And I had to write it down otherwise. Yeah. I I hear you, I have my own little thank you, can I do that?
Oh, yes, of course she does. Of course she does.
But again, today, I have to, have to write it down. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted to say that, you know, as I prepared to step down, I also wanted to take my moment of expressing gratitude. It's really been my honor to work alongside many of you. This one for fifteen years, and others have come and gone, but it's really been my, my honor and my privilege to work with the members of the board and this community. I really want to recognize the incredible staff who make our district a thriving place to learn and grow. And it's everyone, teachers, custodians, bus drivers, ed tech, food service librarians, central office staff, and I could go on and on with all of them. Everyone plays a vital role supporting our students, and their work is the heartbeat of this district. And I'm just so deeply thankful for their commitment, professionalism, and care, I know that they're a couple in back, so I really want them to know that. Alongside the staff are our administrators. Over the past few years, their roles have become increasingly demanding, balancing student needs, academic outcomes, staff development, transportation shortages, growing facilities, tie their budgets, governmental paperwork, in addition to just the day-to-day demands of of the job. And, you know, they do it while working extremely long hours, often late into the evening or early morning. It's not unusual for me to get emails at three o'clock in the morning or ten, eleven o'clock at night because they are still working. And they do that because they love this community, they love the students, they love the staff. And I just really am so appreciative of their leadership, their unwavering focus on doing what's in the best interest of all kids. They are exceptional professionals, and I am grateful for their service and have enjoyed my time with all of them. I also, I have to highlight Becky because we've been together for fifteen years, she was on the board when I was hired, the only remaining board member who was here when I was hired, so I want to extend my sincere thank you to you for your leadership over the last fifteen years. As someone with a type A personality, working with someone who is not a type A person. I know I can be intense sometimes, and.
I'm not the circus kind.
Yeah, and throughout the years, you know, I've always appreciated your steady hand when I'm escalating because things aren't quite going the way I expect them to. Your quiet strength, your support, and your kindness, you know, your guidance has really been instrumental to my personal growth and the direction of this district, and I'm truly grateful for the partnership that we've developed. So with that, thank you again for the privilege of working here. I am grateful, I'll walk away with lessons, with memories, and a deep respect for all of you and all that you do. And I'm not going anywhere, so I will still be around, hopefully I'll run into you at the store, various businesses, and I will be watching from afar. So I wish you the best and thank you for all that you do.
It will only feel real when the office is empty, did different. So this is for you. And Terry has something to project up on the screen, we've gotten a little gift. There you go.
Oh. For my fire pit thing?
Thank you, Seth, are you happy?
Thanks, that's really kind of you, thank you so much, I really appreciate it, that will absolutely be used.
That'll be awesome.
The size of sixteen of us now, with more to come, so.
More chairs.
Yeah.
Isn't that a round neck chair that has the?
Jimmy Buffett one, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna shift this over here, thank you all, I really appreciate it. All right, that didn't hurt. So correspondence, just as written, please. Committee reports, CAC, no meeting, all right, go on.
Oh, I'm ready. I had it open, okay. See, so our last meeting on May thirteenth, we have one in a, in a week, next week, it's exciting and fun, you should come. We talked about a couple of things, restructure, reimagine special education based on student need, and we had some really great information and graphics that led us to unanimous vote to allow that to happen. We had a proposal for unified physical education, which we approved, which fits in well with all of our other programs and so forth. And then we did a deep dive into our ESEA or funding model from the federal government, which has details about what potentially could happen. If people want to hear the facts of what the money potentially is coming from the federal government, it's in that meeting, it is recorded, it's on MSAD eleven. And we talked through how we use all our title funds, and we didn't quite have time to go to data, so next week is data. Come if you'd like to see data from testing.
I know. And that's that.
Sounds so exciting.
Doesn't it?
Yeah.
Drop out prevention, no meeting, finance, no meeting, for our policy committee.
Sure, so we met on May first, right before our last board meeting, and we've got, let's see, one policy that's there for first reading, and I think what we're looking for, Pat, check me, I think we're looking for a first and second reading on this, no, we're just looking for first on this one, yeah. So it's the the cell phone policy, and then we have the the next set there for the second reading. Reviewed those at our last board meeting for first reading. Let's see, just a quick review, so the policy that we're having for first reading is the the student personal electronic device use policy, which is related to cell phones, but also smartwatches, earbuds, and headphones. This policy was presented, let's see, we had a working committee do surveys and, you know, conduct a review of existing kind of programming in in other districts and just related to the impact of cell phones in classrooms. So I I want to take a little bit extra time on this, just because I know that there's some concerns about what what kind of access families are gonna have with with students. This does really anticipate that students will will put their cell phones in, you know, silent off and away from their person, or in the, particularly in the high school, it'll be in a designated area like a you know, like a shoe caddy or that kind of thing. There are areas where there will be permitted usage, so please read this policy if you haven't. This is the first reading, hopefully board members have a chance to read it. So what the committee recommended and what, sorry, what the working group recommended and what the policy committee agreed to, this idea of green zones, yellow zones, and red zones for use. Green zones are where students might be directed to use a cellphone if they have it by their teacher for some purpose, right? Calculator or researcher, you know, that kind of thing. Or if somebody has an identified medical need through an IEP five oh four plan or other medical plan. There's other variations in there, but there will be supervising staff in those instances. Yellow zones, use with caution, some of these would be pre-approved academic spaces, which would be in the school handbook. Hallway transitions, assigned lunch periods, so students will have access to that at general times throughout the day. But then there's still gonna be prohibitions in there, which is gonna be to keep noise levels down and really not broadcasting music, so that's an okay space to use headphones for those brief periods, no taking photos or videos of others. And then no posting or sharing content from campus without permission, so we're following our media policy there. And then otherwise restricting phone calls, video chatting, and FaceTime. So, and then there are red zones where cell phone use won't be, it won't be allowed, and those are gonna be in kept and designated containers, and so, for example, that would be class periods, restrooms and locker rooms, assemblies, drills, and school-wide events unless authorized, testing environments, no phones. Right? So we really want to promote our traditional use of student-family contact, which would be more along the lines of student-initiated, go to the main office, check in with staff, access the main office phone, perhaps the teacher's classroom phone, under staff supervision. Students in grades six to twelve may text parents or guardians during transition times or lunch, so, you know, that unobtrusive kind of contact at those transition times, the yellow, yellow zone would be generally permitted. Again, we do want to, for parents and guardians, call the main office, the office staff will absolutely ensure that urgent messages are relayed to students promptly and non-disruptively. So please trust our our main office staff to follow through with making those contacts, yeah, contacts. Then there's medical exceptions in here, so again, if there's a medical health plan, five oh four IEP, somebody might monitor something with a cellphone, right? So we would want to to allow that. There is also a list of sort of consequences for second, third offense, you know, the item would be removed, that that sort of thing. And the policy will be on, in all the school student handbook, so it'll be there for review. So that was a more thorough review than we usually do, I just want to make sure that people understand where we're coming from, from this, which is that limiting that access during the school day will promote focus for the academics that we want them there for. It's not for us or anybody to cut off communication or to or to disallow that, but we really want to promote the academic focus, reduce distractions, and encouraging face-to-face interaction, we want to do that you know, in person.
I was just wondering if you could speak to, when we saw the presentation, there was like an average amount of time of interruptions. Do you remember, was it like eighty-eight?
It was dozens and dozens, yeah, it was almost a hundred.
Eighty-eight interruptions in one class, and so if you think of class. And so if you think of class at sixteen minutes, and there's eighty-eight interruptions, there's no learning time, no cohesive learning time.
Right, right. That was part of the sort of surveying and assessment that our group, the working group did, right? And it was getting multiple, multiple, yeah, I think it was, yeah. Nearly a hundred and one anecdotal period, but I suspect that's, we suspect that's probably not far off. So we want to reduce that. So that's what this is here for. We're here for a first reading on that. So if I could make a motion that... Oh, sure.
That's my parents.
Yes, your car's blocking someone.
There was one more, Tiffany. Thank you. She appreciates this. Trying to get on. So, just so everybody can hear that, thanks for going through that. So I'm putting that, I'd like to put a motion forward for a first reading for the cellphone use policy.
Second. Questions for Tony or comments? In favor? Great work.
Good team. And then I would like to put the other policies listed as a bundle for second reading, and that's the concussion management, referral and use of general interventions, and referral procedures, expulsion for student guidelines, and the wellness policy.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on. Wellness, no meeting, student reps.
Hi. So I just like, I'd like to add a few things to say thank you to the before, after, just your report, is that okay? No? Okay, cool. So I guess I will, since Kira's still gone, I will do my thank you because this has been one of the most, like, formative experiences of my life. I've gained skills that will stay with me far beyond high school, public speaking, confidence, advocacy, and a deeper understanding of policy. And I've learned what it means to be a public figure, to carry myself with integrity, to rise above attempts to tear me down, and to stand firmly for what I believe is right. So this past year, it led me to my first public testimony. I was one of many speaking in support of LD five hundred thirty-seven, an act to prohibit the doxing of a minor and to authorize a related civil action before the Judiciary Committee at the State House. And as of now, the committee has issued a divided report, and the House has voted to carry the bill into the next session of the main legislature. And my testimony was even referenced during the committee work sessions, which I thought was really neat. So my words are helping move this bill forward, and it's a credit to my time serving on this board. And I also want to make it known that I have been harassed and mocked for my beliefs and my emotional connections to the well-being, the well-being of students in my district. I have been accused about lying of situations, and I don't appreciate the falsities that are being passed on as truths. But despite what anybody says, I know the accurate series of events. Some have hidden behind their screens, attempting to bully me.
Point of order.
Into silence.
Point of order. Yes.
This is straight from the stated objective of thanking the board.
Make a motion. We allow Sage to continue her thank yous. All those in favor? Of Sage being able to continue her remarks. Most? I didn't get that. So Alyssa, who seconded, Megan? Did everyone vote? Do we have an abstention? So who opposed? And no abstention? Thank you. Continue.
To clarify, this is just me contextualizing how this position has quite literally changed my life. So, and it's taught me how to deal with these attempts to silence me. But now I am stronger, I am prouder, and I am more confident than ever because what I am doing is enacting change. My advocacy brings important issues to light in our community, and people are rallying behind what is right for every single child in this district. So this sense of purpose is something that I would not have found without my time on the board. This is my community. I grew up here, and I believe we can move past this rough patch that we're in. We can't forget that future generations will rely on the education system, the curriculum, and the opportunities we offer in our community as a foundation for their futures. We have a responsibility. And even while I'm at Boden, I fully intend to stay involved. I'll bring my thoughts and concerns during public comment. I'll stay informed of policy and finance updates, and I will vote in future school board elections. Our district must be held accountable to preserve the welcoming, encouraging, and educational environment that was the foundation to where I am now. So thank you all for helping me and supporting me and showing me my purpose here. And Pat, I really want, I want to especially thank you. I admire your professionalism, your integrity, and your composure. You've been a role model, and I hope to carry those qualities with me in the future. And I'm also excited to see how the student position grows, and I hope it becomes an integral part of every representative's high school experience as it has been in mine. So thank you. It's just been, it's been very life-changing. Great, so now that out of the way. As far as the high school goes, yesterday was the last day of Lit Fest, and it didn't normally follow the schedule that it does. So it was spread out through different periods, but it went very smoothly. It was a hit. All of the students excelled with their positions and roles. I personally had a lot of fun with Miss Jengris in doing my role. Ratio. So in a kind of sadder note, senior finals began today. Yeah, we're getting there. But underclassmen finals begin on Monday. And so thanks to Ms. Arnold and trying to get our school spirit back into kind of action. She and I coordinated, and we were able to organize some senior activities. So we did a senior prank.
I saw videos of this.
Where there was TP'ing of the building. We found funny pictures of faculty, and we posted them everywhere in the school. Ms. Backus's room, you walked in, and it was just, every square inch was Ms. Backus's face. It was crazy. And we wrapped the office in wrapping paper. So next year, we had some camps to look out, and there definitely will need to be more to that monitoring, but I think it went pretty smoothly. Great. And we also were able to do a senior skip day, so all the seniors with gold cards used them for June second. Yeah, and we all went to Old Orchard Beach, and we played volleyball, and we ate food, and we swam, and it was a really great bonding experience. And our last upcoming senior event is the senior sleepover. You're all going to camp out on the field park, and then we're gonna have breakfast in the morning. So, yeah. Gonna be really exciting.
What's for breakfast?
Probably pancakes, something you can griddle.
That sounds like fun. Good for you. Yay.
Thank you.
About the Fun Town trip.
Oh, yeah. So we had, we wanted to, this probably should have used more planning, but we wanted to take the buses from the Civic Center after marching practice to go to the, to field, or to Fun Town. But you can't, that's too much money. So we all just decided when we get back to the high school, anybody who wants to go, we're all gonna drive down to Fun Town.
That's a great idea. Yes, you got to say.
Okay, so graduation is Saturday, the fourteenth, and the doors open at four, and the ceremony starts at five. And Thursday, the twelfth, is class day from eight ten to, wait, not from eight to ten, ten AM. And we have the Tiger Awards there, and the academic awards, and this is like the first time they've been held together in the morning. And despite both of them being at the same time, the assembly wasn't too long, and it was very nice, and it was very, Ms. Arnold did a really good job. It was very sweet seeing all, like, the faculty getting their awards and like everybody having their walk-up songs. Yeah, that was great. I love that. Anyway. prom was super fun. The rain paused in time for pitchers. So that worked out well, and it was very pretty, and that was just, that was put together very well. And we had AP testing in like mid, early May, and all that was like awful. It was successful. Yeah, that was not a fun, that was not fun, but it's okay. Yeah, that's, that's a report.
That's a report, all right. Thank you. Well, you also participated in the student rep interview. Yes, you did.
Oh, yeah, we did do that. We have our new one here.
That's later on the agenda.
We also, the Leadership Club, it's kind of like an offshoot of the student rep position. We went to MIT. I was the only one who could make it, so it was me and two teachers going.
That's awesome. My AP health test was the same day as that, and I couldn't go. I was so upset.
We toured the Media Lab, and then we, and there's like these, this like organization, and they like hold forums and then conduct research, and the kids present their research. And, yeah, it's a huge thing. Yeah, we met some people from Ohio. It was like very widespread. There was like water and cardboard. That was really interesting.
It's a partnership with Jennifer Chase, if you remember Jennifer Chase.
It was so cool, and we got the organization.
Gotcha.
We loved to hear some like doctorate projects. So MIT, like, people in their doctorate programs were presenting to us, and we got to learn about like language patterns, and what makes a good conversation, and how to interview people correctly for the forums. And it was so cool. It was some of the coolest presentations I've ever seen. Hopefully, a bigger group can go next year.
Yeah, that would be great. Sounds exciting.
Bigger than one.
Yeah.
You're supposed to do, but no one will make it because of the AP testing.
Administrator reports. Who's on first?
All right, from L R, noteworthy. On behalf of the entire R I E Richards Elementary School community, we extend our deepest gratitude, Principal Karen Moody. For her years of outstanding leadership and unwavering dedication, her passion for education, commitment to students, and tireless support of staff have shaped our school into a nurturing and inspiring place to learn and grow. Karen's legacy of excellence will continue to guide and uplift our community for years to come. Thank you, Principal Moody, for the remarkable service and the lasting impact you have made on countless families. And on a personal note, she makes a really cute V. It was the four Vs. She was always willing to dress up when I was teaching there, and she was the principal. Good memory for me. No challenges noted. River View, noteworthy. Our fifth grade class took their annual end-of-the-year field trip on May twenty-second to see the Portland Sea Dogs. The students raised, fundraised, fundraised throughout the year to cover the cost of the tickets, transportation, and class T-shirts. We had seventy fifth-grade students and forty-two parent chaperones attend the game. The tickets are to the pavilion, where students have an all-you-can-eat barbecue, where they fill up on hot dogs and hamburgers. One of our students was chosen as part of a group that gets to throw out the first pitch. Another student was chosen to participate in the in-between gate and in-between inning contest, and a couple of students caught foul balls. Although it was a cool day, everyone had a blast. Another noteworthy for River View. The end of the school year is full of excitement and challenges. Students are excited for summer, but some are nervous about what their summer may look like. We spend a fair amount of time making sure our students are academically and emotionally ready for the end of school while preparing them for the next school year. At Helen Thompson, noteworthy. Our seventy-second annual Peter Pan Fair is set for Saturday, June seventh, from ten to two. They're hoping for a sunny day and a great turnout, and they're prepared for the fun event, rain or shine. Plug. Before you head there, feel free to stop by the PRCS plant sale. Also happening on that day, it's opening at eight o'clock.
There you go.
A challenge for HT. The end of the school year will be an emotional and uncertain time for many students. We are trying to incorporate special events into our final days while remaining focused on learning until the last day. While we're excited about the upcoming summer vacation, the safety, care, and routine of the week-to-week school year provides comfort and stability for our students, and the change can be hard. PRCS, noteworthy. Our third grade classes collaborated with volunteers this spring and led us and had built planting boxes, and then planted and tended to their gardens, and enjoyed the fruits of their labors with a salad celebration that included arugula, spinach, and green leaf lettuce. We also recently hosted our parent information night for our incoming community representatives, which was well-attended, informative, and fun. Our challenge is striking the balance between end-of-the-year fun and following the board. Questions on elementary?
Sounds fun.
So we have secondary. For the middle school, for their noteworthy item, they, we enjoy getting to see the high school students come over to the middle school for Day of Caring to help clean up our trails for the storywalk and flower beds around the building. A new book has been placed on the storywalk, and we encourage families and community to come enjoy the beautiful outdoors in the book. And, and the book at the same time, cut off, sorry. Our NUIA school-wide incentive plan was a huge success. We saw an amazing amount of individual student growth with lots of celebrations for their personal growth. Our reach and art showcases, along with our end-of-year band and chorus concert, truly highlighted the incredible talents, creativity, and hard work that our students and staff have done this year. For a challenge, our back trails are becoming severely overgrown, and we are limited in use to only one of the three trails due to erosion, overgrowth, and creeping swamp. This prohibits our access to the facilities here at the middle school, and some of our activities can no longer occur due to the condition of the space. With the nicer weather arriving, we were feeling the loss of this access. Of course, the end of the year is a busy time of year, and we certainly enjoy seeing that spring fever hitting everybody. At the high school this month, our students demonstrated incredible dedication and effort. They completed their NUIA and made three-year assessments with a strong ninety-eight percent participation rate. Our year-long incentive plan, to continue to motivate and engage students who are eager to share their personal celebrations and achievements. They also brought AP testing, as Kira discussed, in our highly successful Day of Caring. Our students worked so hard. They, it was hot, and no cell phones throughout, and they really gave back to their community. It's meaningful projects. They took great pride in giving back to the community. They did projects such as cleaning the rail trail, waterfront park, planting planters downtown, and reading to younger students at the Boys and Girls Club, as well as support projects. As we wrap up the year, we're especially excited to celebrate our seniors. We invite the community to join us for our graduation block party down at the waterfront following the graduation ceremony. The parade will start around seven forty-five from the Winter Street Baptist Church and go down to the waterfront. Starting at eight, there'll be live music from the Duke Dog Band. There'll be food trucks, fireworks, and more. A challenge for us at the high school, as we head into that final stretch of the school year, time is a major challenge. Our team is working hard to support our students, prepare for our numerous end-of-year events, and ensure everything is ready for graduation next week. We appreciate everyone's continued support during this busy time, although exciting. For athletics, noteworthy is our spring sports are winding down. We're in the last week of regular season play for both high school and middle school. The majority of our teams will most likely make the postseason play. Our boys tennis team is having a great season, considering they did not have a team last year, and are currently still considered club team at the local level. They finished the regular season with a record of eight wins and five losses, and will most likely They finished the regular, regular season with a record of eight wins and five losses and will most likely enter postseason in sixth place in Class B, so. Challenge has been transporting our teams to all their away games. It's continuing to be a struggle. The weather has been challenging this spring as well. With high school and middle school, baseball and softball playing on the high school field, it's been difficult to get all the games. Our high school baseball field and high school softball fields are not draining well, and this is an issue we might have to address relatively. Any questions about secondary?
For technology. Last week, approximately forty of our middle school students had the exciting opportunity to attend the MLTI Student Conference at the University of Maine. While only a small number of conference attendees are typically granted access to tour the cutting-edge factory of the future one point O. Home to the world's largest three-D printer, all of our students and staff are fortunate enough to experience it firsthand. The special access was made possible thanks to the efforts of our very own STEM teacher, Russ Anderson, whose connections and initiative opened the door to this rare opportunity. Students left the conference inspired, having gained a deeper understanding of emerging technologies and a glimpse into the many possibilities that await in the world of advanced manufacturing, engineering, and innovation. For many, it sparked new thoughts about future careers and tech-driven jobs. It's a day of exploration, learning, and inspiration that students will soon forget. For special services, noteworthy, staff are actively finalizing end-of-the-year assessments and hopefully progress reports. While taking part in celebrations that honor our students and colleagues. It's a busy season, but an incredibly rewarding one. For adult education, noteworthy. Looking forward to graduation on the seventeenth. They were not able to confirm enough participants in time to confirm May Billow Farm. So they've opted for the LA food truck, taco truck. It'll be a Tuesday after all. Challenge is lots to do before teachers and staff are away for the summer. We are hard at work planning activities for fall. Nutrition, noteworthy. It was a good school year. Linda knows that she has a great staff and appreciates everything that they do for our students. And the challenge is, we are trying to use all of our food purchases before we leave this school year. Sometimes it's difficult with the end-of-the-year field trips, class parties, and last-minute meal changes. We have a product left over we have to transport at all. The middle school has the biggest freezer. For transportation, noteworthy. Everyone is working together as a team to make sure our students are transported safely and on schedule. We have one driver candidate who is about halfway through the process of earning their school bus certification and license. Challenge is, they're using their substitute drivers and scheduling creatively, creatively, sorry, in order to meet everyone's transportation needs. We've had to ask parents to transport their student athletes to games on the days where the non-entire drivers were available. For curriculum, noteworthy. The spring assessment window is coming to a close. Staff and administration did a great job working with students in reaching the mandated ninety-five percent participation rate for the state math, ELA, and science assessments. Additionally, we just received word this week of our estimated Title I funding for next school year. Challenge, we are awaiting communication on Title II and Title IV funding for next school year. Business office, noteworthy. On behalf of the business office and central office staff, we extend our heartfelt gratitude and best wishes to the superintendent on her retirement. Her leadership dedication and vision have made a lasting impact on our schools, our staff, and the community we serve. We thank you for your years of service and unwavering commitment to excellence in education. On a personal note, we are especially grateful for the friendship you have shown to each of us. It's been a privilege to work with you. I'm wishing you a well-deserved retirement filled with happiness, health, and new adventures.
They know you anything to look at with three-D printers?
Again? We had, we did have to hire a bus because our buses were booked, so we had to hire a private bus to go up. But the kids got free entry into the conference and they got all, including the chaperones, get a free, and a free T-shirt. Honestly, going in that three-D print place, you have to have a, a low-key scan, a security scan. They don't just let anyone up there. And it was one of the coolest things I have ever seen. That thing is amazing. If you ever get a chance to go up, it was incredible.
I remember one year.
Three-D printed boat.
That's what I wanted to know about.
And they do, there's pictures on their website of it, which is pretty, pretty interesting. The students were fascinated, too, because they actually have three ginormous three-D printers. And they, we originally, they originally had the world's largest, and then China built one, and so they decided to, like, quadruple the size of that one. And it, but it, and it takes up the entire place. And it's just, it was completely fascinating. And they were showing you how it all works. It was, the kids were just riveted. It was really neat.
Oh, I'll bet.
They do filaments. They do wood, and they're doing all kinds of, like, different things on wood, dustroom, to see what they could do with that. They have houses built from this. They have all kinds of firewood blocks.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
It's not just the filament. If you get a chance, seriously, you should go up and take a look.
I bet Mr. Anderson was riveted.
Yes, we ended up, we like, okay, let him speak. No, he was, it was wonderful. I mean, everybody, like I said, the kids were just so engaged. I mean, they got to do hands-on. We flew drones. We had to taught how to do that. I got to see a show from another school who came, so it was student-led, which was really neat. So it was really inspiring to see some of that. And I don't know, there was just so much to see. It was just, it was fascinating.
So it was cool.
It definitely was.
I think we need a field trip. Thank you. Okay, ad hoc nun. General information, just as written, as written. Nominations.
Yes, I have a couple. A couple. It is that time of year where we're starting to hold a lot of interviews for positions for next year. So I'm really pleased to recommend Miranda Clark as a social, as a social studies teacher at the middle school for next year, and Jessica Porter as an elementary teacher, an elementary art teacher, who will cover Pitts and Randolph and the Riverview Community Schools.
I make a motion, we accept both as. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. It's that time. Later in the agenda. Yep, it's time for our new school board member. We, we held interviews for our new student school board member and our, there were six candidates and they were all just outstanding. It was just outstanding. And we have not had that many outstanding candidates in a while. So it made our decision-making challenging, and it was just really difficult to, I kind of wish they all could have done it, but you can't, you can't have six, so we had to do the hard things. So Ella Grace Crook is here with, I'm assuming, her dad. Our new school, student school board member, and she will be joining us in August, in August. Yeah, so, yes.
Just awesome.
Awesome, yeah. And everyone, please welcome Ella. Take a moment before she escapes to just say, hey, I'm glad you're here. We can't do this without you. So, and I am looking forward to great things coming from the high school. Leadership club and just more, more great involvement with our students as, as they become leaders and we help to foster them to become leaders. So, welcome, Ella. It's really nice to have you.
See. This is the time, the meeting where we grant the superintendent the authority to issue contracts throughout the summer. Yes. I have to say my spiel, okay? I guess I have to. So according to the law, okay, there's a three-step process in order to hire teachers. The first step is that I have to make a nomination. The second step is that the board has to approve. And then the third step is that I have to issue a contract. So if any one of those three steps do not occur, then someone is not hired. A teacher and administrator is not hired. So it is common practice to give me the authority to, to skip coming to the board, to allow me just to issue a contract directly. But that is out of sequence with what the law requires. But historically, it has been given to me because otherwise you're going to have meetings almost on a weekly basis, certain times throughout the summer. Because we can't sit and wait on hiring these individuals. So historically, the board has given me the authority, but I need to make sure that everyone understands that while it's common practice in most school districts around the state, it is out of sync a bit with law.
Just a question, may I, Madam Chair? Do you plan to coordinate that with Katie over the summer? Like, when are you going to transition your time to her time?
She officially starts on July one.
It is July one, okay.
We are planning on spending the day together on June thirtieth, so that we're together that last day.
Very good.
And we have already been meeting on a regular basis. And so we are already talking about things that need to happen with the transition. We've created documents on, think about this in August, think about this in this month, and other things that need to be done. So we are already trying to support her transition to make it a smooth one.
Excellent. Thank you.
Molly, so is this granting the position of superintendent, the authority, or is this granting you the?
The superintendent, so it's the position of the superintendent.
Good question. Yeah, that's what we're on.
It's not to me.
Yeah. Maybe when should we do so?
Second. Who was that? Joanne?
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Board chair report. First thing is the budget referendum on the tenth. So I would like to encourage everyone, please, to put that on your, on your trusty calendars and don't miss your opportunity to vote for the school budget. On June twelfth, we will be having a a special meeting to accept the budget referendum, and that will be at five o'clock. The time isn't there.
Yeah, I, probably five o'clock, but I'll, I'll talk more about June the twelfth afterwards, during my.
Okay, and I promised you guys a couple of meetings ago. A prolonged chart.
Oh, yeah.
And I said there'd be questions on a test later about all the things that we've done since, this is all the things I'll show the people who weren't here.
This is what, this is the trajectory of what public school started as and has become. So in nineteen hundred, this is, up here is what schools, public school was responsible to do. And as you can see, we're responsible for a whole lot more now. So I have this hanging in my office because it really is, it's a great reminder of what we're responsible to do and how we got here. And I said then that I would get one for all the board members, and I have some extras because I know that everyone's going to want one. So there's one for everybody. Some around.
You don't need one.
I don't need one.
You're still going to want to know what we're responsible for.
Should all sign one for you.
Yes.
And there really are plenty, so if anyone else would like one, just so you can remember why or how.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. And let's see, I also have a follow-up to our last meeting from Drapton and Woodson regarding chairs of ability to vote. And so I, do you think, do I need to read this letter? What do you?
I have, I brought copies if you wanted to distribute it in. I also brought copies of school board policy, G B.
Yes, that would be great.
I'm just splitting it in half.
Yep, thank you. So yes, I can vote. And we also have a policy that's a little important, so thank goodness for policy and rules.
Just want to pick the policy inside of that.
And so the last part of my report, that's it. Follow up, okay. Oh, sure. And. Maybe not?
One more policy. Are there any?
You're good.
Here, let me hand that to you.
We'll fight it out over here.
I have it up on my computer right now.
Arm wrestling, rumbling, we'll take care of it.
Yes, there is. Thank you.
And the last thing that I want to do is I, I, I only read a part of my recognition of Pat. When Tony and I were working together yesterday, as I was struggling to figure out how to say this next part, he asked, he's, he's just so great at listening. I really do appreciate that. He asked me an engineering question, and that is, what is it that we want to fix? And that was a great question. What do I want to fix? And it's not even that I want to fix it, it's that we need to fix it, and something is broken. Historically, we've been known as a very high-functioning school board. And we were always able to respectfully work through our differences. When we had conflict, we were always able to talk about it and about the issues and to continue our work together. That's what we're supposed to be able to do. That's what we are sworn to do by the state of Maine, is to be able to work together, do our work, and do the work that belongs here. And I realize this is going to sound like a lecture, but I don't have any other way to do it. I have continued hope every day that we can get, not go back to how we were, but that we can get to a better place where we're moving forward and doing things that are the right way, just doing them the right way. We're governed by policy, and I'll be referencing, referencing several policies, policies in section B of our policy manual. Policy B, or section B, is how it's board governance and how we run ourselves. Why is that important? It's important because it's our instruction manual and guides us through our behavior. And some examples of our behavior that need corrections are as follows. Commenting on Facebook, on, on a post about a new board member from another school board member, about their, a member of their family or their family wearing MAGA hats and making parental value judgment about that. That is, that's not okay. Commenting on Facebook about that there are members of this school board that are child mutilation advocates and that there are members of this board who should not be allowed to be around children. A member of the board targeting a student school board member relentlessly and engaging in outside organizations, like Courage is a Habit, to dox both the student and the student's parent in an effort to jeopardize their employment. And I could go on. That's just, that's the very short list. The point is that these behaviors are not only against policies, but they're unkind, and they are not anything that fosters trust and a relationship with those that you've got to work with. And it really doesn't matter if you agree. You all got elected. It doesn't matter if you don't like something that someone else said. You have to rise above and deal with it. You just have to. We cannot continue to poke and badger and, and pick. The posts about child mutilation and efforts to endanger one's employment are especially egregious and are slanderous. These statements and behaviors spread lies and poison our community and its trust in the school board and the district where once there was trust. The only thing that has changed is board membership. And that some board members seem to have come with agendas that are supported by parent rights groups, by Larry Lockman, by Alvin Louie, by Truth Slinger, who was here tonight. If your work is influenced by them or any other outside organization, you're not doing what you were elected to do, and I will refer you back to policy BCA and BEB. Come to the board, ready to learn, not armed to fix. Our work is very strictly regulated and pres- Our work is very strictly regulated and prescribed. Asking questions that are respectful, having to do with our sworn duty to students, is encouraged. Being elected and beginning your term believing that our system is broken and that we're hurting children and making unproven accusations both in the boardroom and through social media again is slanderous to the system and to the board. I would remind you again to look at policy B C A. The idea of a school-based health center was approached last fall. It is clear that some people in some groups, many who don't even live within our community, do not want this in our community. The upshot of that is that hundreds, literally hundreds of hours, have been spent on the part of our staff and our superintendent on wasted emails. I received a hundred and ninety emails in the last two days. I don't read any of them because they're the same thing, they say the same thing, they're from the same people. It's a waste of time and energy, and the reason they're being sent is based on a lie. And so our work gets interrupted by lies. There was never, has never been, I'm off-script, but there's never been any conversation about transgendering students. Never, that's not what happens in school-based health centers. We have several in this area, health centers that are closing because they don't have funds, they don't have money. We need physicians, we need help. Our community needs healthcare, our students need healthcare, our students that don't have physicians need healthcare. Our staff who needs, who need physicals and don't have a regular physician need healthcare. Any employees who don't have a physician who need a physical, if we have a school-based health center, can get one there. And that helps our insurance costs stay lower. That helps us to get to the one percent increase rather than the seventeen that could happen. It's user-based, so it's a helpful thing for the community, not anything that has been described, by nothing that has been described. And that's, it's disingenuous, it's hurtful, and it has to stop, it, it has to stop. The most egregious of all of it is the lies that have been fanned and fueled through Facebook, through private messages, sending emails falsely representing the M S A D eleven school board to outside entities. It's, it's, it's awful, and it has to stop, it's all lies, it's untrue, unproven. And all, it, it, we live in a culture right now where all you have to do is drop the seed of doubt and people glom onto that like it's candy. That's wrong, and, and I'm gonna keep saying it. We need to eliminate the distractions, we have work to do, we, our job, we have five things that we're assigned to do. But hire a superintendent, set and approve a curriculum that meets the state and federal standards, create a balanced budget, maintain peace within our schools through occasional expulsions, and set policies and then follow them. We're not doing really well at following our own policies right now. And I'm gonna keep hammering on that. And I'm gonna ask Tony to keep hammering on it, because he's the policy chair. We have five jobs, and those five jobs are set by the state, and we answer to the legislature. Period. Our culture is changing and shifting, and I realize that that causes fear among people, but that's not our job to fix. Our job has not changed, our responsibilities have not changed, the way we do it has only been kept current with standards. We are not indoctrinating anyone, we are not teaching anyone how to be gay. We are not doing any of that, and we are not going to start doing that. The lies need to stop. Our responsibilities are to every single student, we are here to educate every single student. Their academic success is our responsibility. Their gender, that's a family issue, not ours. But you know what, we accept every single one of those students, every single student, it doesn't even matter, it's not ours to fix. We accept them just as they come, hungry, dirty, clean, good shoes, bad shoes, no jacket. Gay, straight, trans, we take them all, we're not teaching them to do anything. We don't, we accept everyone just the way they are. That's what our job is, that's what public school, public education is all about. And if we can't do that, this isn't the place for us. If you can't do that, this is not the place for you, and if you want the laws to change, this is not the place to do that either. There's a very specific place where laws get made and laws get changed, and it isn't in here. So coming here and spouting about how we're breaking the law and doing all these, we are following the law, we're gonna continue to follow the law. And we don't wanna be sued by anyone, including the Human Rights Commission. So, every one of us ran for a school board seat. You work for the students, you answer to the legislature, as it says in policy B B and B B B A. Our attorney told us in training, you've run for the school board, you won a nonpartisan election. Now it's time to start working as a group, this group is going to follow the law. We only exist as a board when we are in this room during a public meeting. That means outside here, on your Facebook, whatever, you are not, I am not Becky Fless, school board member, outside this room, I am me. So anything you write, you're responsible for. And if you say misleading things about the district and other board members, you're gonna hear about it. And block me on Facebook, that's fine, I'm hardly ever on it, but somehow I seem to get screenshots of everything. We need to improve our behavior and follow our own rules. My expectation is that the board, we as a board, are gonna, moving forward, uh, that we're gonna rely on facts. Facts that we're provided with, we will be conducting district business honestly and in good faith. We have a new superintendent starting in a month. We can do this. We can, we must, and if we can't, and we need to be the best, best employer. The one job we have is to, to hire a new superintendent or hire a superintendent. We need to be the best employer that person has ever had to date. And that means our behavior has to, has to be adjusted. If the behaviors continue and don't improve, I have asked for help and we will censure. And I will remove, I will strip committees from board members who can't seem to follow. And what that will mean is that other board members have to stand up and be put on committees because we have to have a quorum everywhere. So that we can do our business, our business goes on, whether we, whether we get sidetracked or not, the business has to get done. But this constant fixation on, on Title Nine and sexuality and, and these issues that just are not ours. We have to follow the law, Jeff, and I know you're gonna say that.
Point of Autumn.
Yes, sir.
I am sick of being lectured and uh, and pontificated at. Because I don't need this lecture, we're here to do the business.
Yes, we are.
Continue the business.
This is my.
Do I get to speak to twenty minutes as well, like you do? I don't wanna do that now, well, you know, you've been lecturing for quite a while.
Behavior doesn't change.
But.
The behavior doesn't change.
Enough is enough, let's continue the business.
The behavior doesn't change, Jeff, and that's a problem. We have outside forces that are conducting our business, bringing signs and flags.
You don't, don't even try attach that, to try to attach that to me.
To you?
Yeah.
I would never.
Okay, but I mean, that's.
I would never.
That's the indication I'm getting here.
We're off track.
I would never.
Thank you.
We are done?
Section.
For now. Committees will be stripped if it doesn't happen. Thank you. Next on the agenda.
All right, my final report. Um, central office, summer hour, starting the week of June sixteenth through August fifteenth. Um, they will be Monday through Thursday from seven to three, and then they're closed to the public on Friday. Um, our office staff have the opportunity to work like ten-hour days or to take Fridays off. And so because the only way to access our building is through computers, right? We cannot open our building to the public if we don't have, um, if we're not fully staffed. So um, generally, we're only open four days a week during the summer. Um, a reminder about graduation tickets, if you haven't already reached out to Martha. Um, and ask for graduation tickets, there's reserved seating for board members. Um, it is such an amazing event, um, and I certainly hope to see many school board members there. Um, we've already covered a lot of the end-of-the-year events, so like graduation is at Pacific Center on the fourteenth at five o'clock. The middle school has their grade awards on Wednesday, um, the eleventh at eight A M. And as has already been said, um, adult ed graduation is on the seventeenth at five o'clock. Um, school-based health center update, so I have heard back from Health Reach and their insurance company, their attorneys, they've completed their review um of the M O A. And so now the M O A is ready to come back to the board. Um, so I would like to schedule, uh, in addition to the meeting on the twelfth, um, in which you're going to accept the results of the referendum, I'd like to tag, uh, tag on um, an executive session so that you can meet with legal counsel to talk to you about that M O A. Um, and then you'll have to decide whether we add to the agenda. Um, after you come out of executive session, whether you're going to vote um, or make any sort of decision on the school-based health clinic. This has taken a lot longer than we ever intended. I think um, between our insurance company and their insurance company, those two things alone took twelve weeks. That's three months just to get through insurance company review. Um, so I apologize, I know it's been really frustrating that it's taken so long, but we've had to go through um that legal process. Um, so if, so there'll be an agenda posted tomorrow, um, but I'd like to do that on Thursday night um, and have the board make that decision so that as you start a new school year, you've made a decision one way or the other, right? Um, and it's not lingering. Um, now, if it is approved, it's important to understand that this has taken so much longer um than what was intended. That if it's approved, it would not be ready for the start of the school um in September of twenty-five. Um, it would probably would not be ready for the start of this, it wouldn't be ready until the start of the school in twenty-six. Um, because there's a hiring process and there's everything else that would go along with it. Um, so that will be next Thursday. In addition, uh, we do need a reentry hearing. Um, I'd like to do that reentry hearing next Wednesday at five o'clock, have to do it on a separate night um to maintain student confidentiality. Um, I cannot have a reentry hearing the same night as a school-based health clinic that might most definitely will have a lot of people present.
That's the eleventh you're talking about for the reentry?
Yeah, so Wednesday, the eleventh, at five o'clock for a reentry hearing. And the twelfth, which would be um approval or acceptance of whatever the results are uh from the budget referendum. Um, if I have any individual employees to hire, I might throw those on the agenda. Um, and then it would be an executive session with your attorney, um, so.
Okay.
So that will be the twelfth. Um, then Gardner Youth Basketball Association, I wanted to put out that uh we have been approached by Gardner Youth Basketball. Um, they would like to donate um new basketball, outdoor basketball courts at the high school. Um, so they're exploring and meeting with us to really explore the possibility of taking existing tennis courts that are in bad shape, that are in core shape, not the good ones, the old ones, the old ones that are not in good shape. And turn it into uh basketball courts, probably two basketball courts. Um, and so we are meeting with the president, we um met with them yesterday, actually. Had a great conversation and will be looking at, moving forward. We're still investigating the scope of the work, any permitting that needs to be done. We would have to have a, a legal document to make sure that we knew who was responsible for what. And depending on all of that, then it will probably come back to the board for um approval uh and consideration. Um, and so we don't know exactly the price at this time, the initial um scope has probably changed as a result of our conversation. Uh, but what they're hoping to do is to put out requests to the community for sponsorships um to help fund, fundraise. So I wanted to make sure that is incredibly generous of um Gardner Youth Basketball, and so I wanted you to know that they're doing that work. Um, I also heard late last night that the construction priority list that we're all waiting for, that that is going to be released on July ninth. It's going to be released to the State Board of Education, so they will be the ones who will receive it first. Um, and so Katie will be paying close attention on, to that list. Um, and so you will know by your first meeting in August uh how you ranked. Um, so, and as a reminder, all six schools are, um, should be on that list in some fashion. And that's what I have for my report.
So in the spirit of the H B's, the H B H C, uh, for those of us who are against it, for those of us who are for it. Um, understand that R S U and the P team has proposed a part-time uh S B H C.
School-based, S B H C. School-based health center, yes.
Yep, that is uh appointment-based, that's something we could consider, we'll put into discussion.
I believe that when they were here, um, they indicated that um it, it may not be full-time at the start. It's, there's uh probably part-time initially, and then it may grow depending on usage and need and staffing levels.
But it would be appointment-based, they also indicated that, that it would be appointment-based.
Yeah, that's what I said, so I mean.
So it would be.
Could we, could we have a discussion about maybe us doing that?
Yeah, that's, but that's, no, that's exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yes, part-time.
Start part-time.
Would start part-time, and then it is.
That is not what they said during the question-and-answer period. A student can go to the nurse, the nurse can triage a student to send her directly to the school-based health center during the course of the day. That is not appointment-based, that is response-based. So that is an inaccurate statement that you said, it is, should be open for discussion.
That was how it was.
It will incre, it will absolutely depend on even whether they're available, if they're busy, it's an appointment now. Could the appointment be made shortly thereafter? Absolutely, shortly after they meet the nurse, um, but they still need to make some type of appointment. But there is that ability, so. I would suggest that we move into um executive session, we still have three executive sessions. Um, so to be able to get you out of here by nine thirty, as required by policy.
It's ready. The crap. You'll see the next wheel.
Thank, yes, we should say.
Thank you, Lanto.
Sorry. Sorry.
I'd like to entertain a motion that we offer contract to Dr. Drelle for the Pitts and Randolph Consolidated School principal for one year.
So then, perfect. All those in favor? Opposed? Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we pass these back?
Yes, yes.
Thank you for staying.
Yes, thank you. Oh, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Good luck moving.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch because I do PTG at Pittston, so we'll get to know each other.
You'll probably be at the plant sale.
Oh, yes, I will have to stop on that.
Awesome.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to enter executive session to consider a side agreement with the Gartner Association?
Um, can Angela join us?
Yeah, Angela, join us.
Now, was that unanimous?
Yes.
Jeff, did you vote?
No, we should have voted.
You voted yes?
I did vote yes. Okay, thank you, thank you.
All for executive session.
Gartner Teacher Association side.
Yeah, do you mind since you're here?
Oh, it's fine, I just, I had lost track, it's late, I lost track of what the topic was. So, sorry.
We're meeting.
Will there be a vote coming back?
Potentially.
Hang on.
Sorry. Want to vote?
...
Right. And there is no action tonight.
No, I have a second session.
So we are adjourned.
Great.
Thank you all for staying.